Good evening and welcome to the April 24, 2018, meeting of the City Council. Vicki, if you would be so kind as to take role for us?
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here, and in honor of Mr. Nigel's 79? Your birthday? No, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, stood by in the United States of America, and to the Republic, where which stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, veritable, just as far.
Thank you, David. We have one announcement that is on the agenda and one that will be made in a moment. First announcement, which I'd like to turn over to Irene, you can announce May 5th and what you have planned.
May 5th is Operation Clean Sweep, and I hope to see you all at City Park at 9:00. And we will be serving donuts and coffee, and you can register and go out and help clean up San Bruno. So we'll also be doing some painting in various buildings around the city, and some planting on San Mateo Avenue in the pots that have the trees. If you've noticed, some of the trees have been cut down, the trees that died. So we are going to plant flowers around them to make it look better. And I think that's about it. So please come, you can register online on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. And also, not on the agenda, but I'd like to call up Nancy Kraus, if you can, to the microphone, to just let us know a little bit about a couple of awards that were achieved by the San Bruno Park School District. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. This is spontaneous, so I'm not scripted. I hope I do justice to this wonderful announcement on behalf of Dr. Stella Camp, Superintendent of San Bruno Park School District. In the last several weeks, San Bruno Park School District has received two incredible awards, of which our community should be very proud, and if I may briefly share a little bit about each. The J. Russell Kent Award has come to us from the San Mateo County School Boards Association, which represents the San Mateo County Office of Education, 23 school districts, and the San Mateo Community College System. And our district is recipient of the Kent Award this year for our San Bruno Student Health Center, which is on the Bel Air Elementary School campus, and provides numerous services to our students and parents throughout the year. And we really proudly share this award with Peninsula Healthcare District, who has funded over $1 million to create the Modular Health Center, and also Healthier Kids, who provides dental and hearing screening, our San Bruno Lions Club, who provides vision screening, American Heart Association, Leah's Pantry, and a number of other grants who have brought in some wonderful programs for our students and parents. And the second award is that we have been named the Best Communities in Education. It's a national award, and we are the only school district in the Bay Area to receive this award, and one of, I think, only 16 in the state. This award comes to San Bruno Park School District in recognition, not only of the outstanding music program at Parkside, in which almost half the students are enrolled, but also consequent to a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation of nearly $500,000, all students in the San Bruno Park School District, grades K through 5, now have music education. And thanks to the Welch Family Foundation, all our preschool children have music education. In addition, the Cappuccino High School, which we are proud of in San Bruno, but is in another school district, Cappuccino High School also received the same distinction as a Best Communities in Education for their exemplary music program. And so that is our good news, and thank you for calling on me to share it.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Appreciate it. Congratulations to everyone. Next, under Presentations, we have two proclamations, and with Council's approval, after the second one is given, I'd like to have item number seven, receive the annual report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee moved up at that time. So the first presentation will be declaring April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in the City of San Bruno. Therefore, as Mayor, I am, as Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do I hereby claim April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in the City of San Bruno, and ask all citizens to support efforts and care for our trees, forests, and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Salazar if he could please present this to Community Services Interim Director Mike Stallings, please. If you go to the podium.
Thank you very much. Honorable Mayor and members of the Council, I'm Mike Stallings, and I'm here to just thank you for this proclamation. Arbor Day is a nationally celebrated observance, encouraging tree planting and maintenance. In the past, the city has celebrated Arbor Day during March, but this year, we're recommending we celebrate it during October because it's the optimal time for planting trees in Northern California. Arbor Day gives the city an opportunity to educate citizens on proper tree planting, and the value of community trees for today is our urban forest and in the future. It's also an opportunity to educate the community on the entire environment. The City Parks and Recreation Services Department will sponsor a community tree planting event on Saturday, October 27, 2018, to celebrate our observance of Arbor Day, and further details of this date will be forthcoming. I'd like to bring to your attention the condition of our urban forest, as we currently have a considerable number of street trees that are nearing the end of their life cycle, and in many cases are outgrowing their planting area. We are developing a strategy to replace these trees with species that are more sidewalk-friendly and better adapted for climate change. I would also like to mention the cyclical pruning of Area 4 has been completed this past March with 261 trees that were pollarded and 121 trees that were pruned. This system will move to a different area as a part of the funding for next year. The completion of this tree work of this season happened in a timely manner, and will translate into fewer tree and branch failures in a healthier urban forest. With that, I want to thank the City Council for your continuous support of the city's tree program. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is declaring National Bike Month and Bike to Work Day in the City of San Bruno. And this recognizes that May 2018 is the National Bike Month, and the second week in May as Bike to Work Week, and May 10, 2018, as the state's Bike to Work Day. And I'd like to ask the Vice Mayor, Laura Davis, to present this to David Nigel, the Chair of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee.
I can hug her. We used to be colleagues. On behalf of the B-PAC, we're very grateful for this recognition and acclamation. And we have been very active in the Bike to Work program since 2002, and many of our committee members have been leaders, and I think they have, like, 70 refresher stations, and we were one of the first. We're very proud of that fact. This coming year, in my report, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we have David Nigel. Next step.
I have a couple announcements before I do the report. First of all, what Nancy was talking about in the J. Russell Kent Award, I don't know if the public realizes, that is the highest award in San Mateo County. Russell Kent was the superintendent when I started teaching at Allen School, and he was revered and very talented. And when he left the Superintendency of San Mateo County, they made this award in his honor. So congratulations to Parkside and Cappuccino and the San Bruno Park School District. Second, I had the honor last week representing the Park Commission in honoring Karen Anne Livingston, as the Commission did in February, as the Council did in February. And such a wonderful person. And I want to publicly thank you for recognizing her, and she received the Community Recognition Award from our Commission as well. And her daughter came in from the Midwest, and her son was here, too. So we're very happy about that. The third thing I wanted to talk about, thank you for hiring Mike Stallings. He is a gifted leader, and he's been just a short time-
Did he put you up to that announcement?
I mean, as interim.
Oh, okay.
All right. The main thing, he's working with us, and he knows the city already so well, and his leadership at our meeting is really impeccable. I wanted you to know, whoever was responsible for that, you were right on.
And now, if we-
The 2018 Annual Report.
We will receive the annual report from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee from our chairperson, David Nigel.
Thank you. 2017 was another wonderful year for B-PAC, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee that was established in 2002, and we started meeting in February. There are two charter members, Walter Byrd and David Nigel. And our committee is a very proactive, wonderful committee. The slide on the screen shows the members. All of us are San Brunans, except for Cecile. She represents Walmart. And that's our community outreach. Our council liaison was councilperson Irene O'Connell, and this year, the mayor serves as our liaison. I want to compliment our fabulous staff under the leadership of David Waltering. I don't know how he does all his work, but he sure gives us full attention, and we're very grateful for that. And David Wong is our Associate Engineer. Next slide, please. The responsibilities of our committee is to serve as an advisory capacity to the City Council and our city manager. And the second bullet, provide input and recommendation on the development and implementation of the comprehensive and ongoing plan to promote and encourage bicycle use and safety for commuting and recreation, enhance and foster pedestrian accessibility and safety, and publicize and encourage citizens' participation in bicycle and pedestrian-related projects. And our feedback is that most citizens that ride bicycles, safety is their main concern, and we've been working and focusing on that. The third bullet, provide other assistance as requested by the City Council or our city manager, including reviewing and commenting on grant applications related to the committee's core responsibilities. Next slide, please. The next one is outreach. Outreach is a very crucial part of our goals and objectives. And we, it's been mainly Walter and me, and last year Jeffrey Tang, Tong, that we have been going to the schools, teaching them about bicycle safety and bicycle care. And we have already had two visits to John Muir School, Portola, Rollingwood, and this year, we had a fantastic visit to El Cristal that I'll talk about in a few minutes. But here in this photo, you can see committee member Walter Byrd, who is a real cyclist, as Jeffrey. Walter rode his bicycle from 1964 till his retirement, from Skyline to United Airlines, rain, shine, whatever the weather was. He's avid, and right now, when he rides, he stops and promotes the goals and objectives of our committee. If you're walking the trail, he's going to stop you up there and talk with you. That's a photo of the students at John Muir School, and we had over 260 students at that assembly. The next slide is our outreach and education, and this is happening this coming Saturday, as you know. It's Day of the Book and Day of the Child through the San Bruno Park School District. And each year, this is the 10th year, we have, the last few years, we've set up an information table where we give out flyers of 10 safety tips. We talk to parents on how to teach their kids safety and how to maintain their vehicles, and also bring their attention to a program that we're very proud of, our Public Service Announcements. Next slide, please. Another outreach and education program is Bike to Work Day. We're very proud of this. I mentioned it before when I was the recipient of the proclamation for our committee and our city. Bike to Work Day will happen May 10 this year, a day earlier than last year. And we have two stations. And this is our collaboration, the first station is at BART, and it's sponsored by Walmart. And Cecile, I talked about her earlier, she's the one that organizes it and sets it up. And the committee is, we usually see about 350 cyclists that go by, and about 180 or 190 stop, and we give them refreshment, tire repair kits, bicycle maps of the county. And we had another station for the first year, last year, at the Caltrain Station, sponsored by YouTube. And this year, our director encouraged us to have personnel at both stations. They are both in San Bruno, they're both San Bruno businesses. We want to support them. Next slide, please. Outreach and education, this is another program we're very proud of. This was started by Paula when she was working with us. It's called the International Riders Visit to San Bruno and YouTube. The first year, we met at Commodore Park. These folks rode their bicycles from Santa Cruz that day, and I guess that's about 75 miles. And this past year, we were hosted by Google and YouTube. And we met at Google, and I think our staff had a lot to do with coordinating that and making it possible. Google provided a free lunch and talked to the riders. They were from Spain, the Philippines, China, Canada, Australia, and we even had a couple from San Bruno. And this is a wonderful event. Then we went across the street to YouTube, and they gave us a tour at YouTube as well. And they treated us to lunch. I don't know if you're aware of this, but they have a wonderful cafeteria, and the workers at Google and YouTube can go down and have free food anytime, and they treated us like dignitaries. They had special signs on tables, so their employees wouldn't sit at our tables while we enjoyed their lunch. Next slide, please. Another outreach, and one we're very proud of, is the Posey Parade, and now combined, I think it was last year or two, was that right, Mayor? It was the first day we Community Day in the Park? I think it was the first one last year, I'm not sure, maybe two years ago. But this is a wonderful, wonderful activity. For years, the Lions have sponsored the Posey Parade, and it's the longest existing parade of non-motorized vehicles. It's youngsters can have. Our committee asked if we could be in the parade. They said we were too old. And so there's a picture on the left of our information table when we talk to parents, and we give away these little tattoos for the kids and talk to them about safety. And the second photo is Community Day in the Park, and Danielle has spearheaded that through the Rec Department, a fantastic activity that has grown and increased every year. Next slide, please. Our accomplishments. We provided bicycle safety instruction to local school, local youth at multiple events, all the ones that I just mentioned. Participated in the San Bruno BART Bicycle Pedestrian Gap Study to identify possible safety improvements within a quarter of a mile of the BART station. And that was to make it easier for people to access BART by bicycle from Rollingwood, Crestmore, and all parts of our city, to encourage people to ride on BART and Caltrain. Evaluated the feasibility of pursuing a grant application for a community shuttle program. Staff and Jeffrey worked very hard on this project. And the last bullet, we learned about bike-sharing programs as our director made it possible for the program in South San Francisco to come to our committee meeting and instruct our folks on how successful and the pitfalls that they've encountered. With that, and we also have a wonderful relationship with Cable TV and Miriam, and she has created some of the most interesting public safety announcements that can be seen on Channel 1 and all the other. I was watching TNT, and we had our helmet PSA on there, and I was really happy to see that. Next slide, please. More accomplishments. We advised on successful grant applications to install five bicycle racks dispersed throughout our community, including at City Park, the library, and the Posey Plaza. We supported successful grant applications for a bicycle fix-it station at the San Bruno BART station, and we referred information for helpful Public Service Announcements, PSAs, on understanding and using the new traffic signals on El Camino referred to as pedestrian hybrid beacons. And the reason we pursued that, we noticed that when they started operating, they start flashing yellow, then they turn red, and then the people start crossing, and then they start flashing red. And people didn't know when they were allowed to proceed. So we got this, I don't know, do we have this, David? This one? We don't, okay. But we have this diagram that explains the whole procedure, and I think people are becoming accustomed to that. Next slide. Our goals for this coming year, the implementation of the Walk and Bike Plan, that is the core of what we are doing. And I know staff has put in countless hours. We've had outside architects coming and technicians helping us with this program. To install bicycle and pedestrian amenities and infrastructure, pursue grant opportunities, expand community outreach for children and adults, such as events, school presentations, safety education, and public service announcements. Identify bicycle pedestrian safety improvements citywide. And, the last slide, study opportunities to implement a Vision Zero policy. Vision Zero, we talked about it last year, that's trying to eliminate all accidents and have people being safe in our community and elsewhere. To continue to support Bike to Work Day and other community events and activities. And as I mentioned before, Bike to Work will be Thursday, May 10, and I was proud to hear that our director may be riding his bike from San Mateo. That's not in cement, but he's really thinking about it. And we want to continue our good work with Walmart.com at BART and YouTube at the train station. And, thank you very much. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions for David?
See what a handsome group of people.
Looking onward and upward.
Very dedicated.
David, I want to thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for the service you give, not only just to the bike and pedestrian, but also parks and rec, and the other things that you do for the community. So please go back to the members and let them know our thanks for their time and efforts.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki, on to Consent.
Item 5, Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implement in earlier Council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Any action from Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's note, ayes have it. There are no public hearings. We've done number seven. Move on to eight, Vicki.
Public comment. It is the Council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the Council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law.
Is there anybody from the audience that wanted to speak on any items that were not on the agenda this evening? Okay.
All right. Item 9, Conductive Business. Item 9A, receive report regarding citywide intersection safety study.
Jimmy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item in front of you tonight has been in interest of the City Council to improve vehicle traffic and pedestrian safety at intersections throughout the city. Last year, the City Council requested staff to conduct a citywide analysis to determine whether there will be any potential site distance issues at intersections within the city. The City Council then approved a contract with TJKM Transportation Consultants to perform the evaluation. The scope of work was performed, was to perform an initial evaluation of 20 intersections in the city to determine whether there is sufficient intersection site distance and provide recommended measures to improve the safety. The goal was for staff to use the results from the study as a template for possible development of policies that could guide future intersection evaluations to be conducted by staff in-house. The study has been completed, and we're here tonight to provide an overview of TJKM's analysis and recommended improvements.
Intersection site distance is defined as a distance at which a motorist can see potentially conflicting vehicles at an intersection. Intersection site distance should be of sufficient length to allow motorists to anticipate and avoid potential collisions, and should be kept free of obstructions such as parked vehicles, hedges, utility poles, and buildings. Insufficient site distance can lead to an increase in the number of collisions, as motorists may be unable to see and react to approaching vehicles. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the study now. TJKM started their process by researching collision records in the Transportation Injury Mapping System, known as TIMS, which is a collision records database maintained by the State Transportation Research and Education Center at UC Berkeley. TIMS draws its data from the statewide integrated traffic record system, also known as SWITTERS, which is a collision report database maintained by the state of California. TIMS geocodes the collision data, which greatly increases the ease and accuracy with which engineers can perform analysis with the data. TJKM reviewed the collision records for the five-year period from 2010 through 2014. That time period was selected because the data in the TIMS system for more recent years is still in a provisional state. Intersections that are not under the city's jurisdiction were excluded from consideration. Examples of these would be all the intersections along El Camino Real, which are owned by the state of California. TJKM was able to zero in on 67 intersections in San Bruno where at least one collision had been reported during the five-year period. TJKM then ranked the 67 intersections based on a number of criteria, including the number of collisions that were reported at the intersection, the type of collisions that occurred, the severity of the collisions, and whether the collision involved a pedestrian or cyclist. The ranking system also assigned higher scores if the location is in a residential area, near a school, or near a senior center. The top 10 intersections by score were selected for further analysis. The top 10 intersections by score were selected for further analysis. However, the scoring system favors major roads with higher traffic volumes and staff also wanted to include local street intersections in the study. Therefore, for the second 10 locations, TJKM and staff gave preference to intersections of two local streets that do not have always stop or traffic signal control. The intersections of Walnut Avenue with Second Avenue and San Anselmo Avenue with Santa Lucia Avenue were also selected because TJKM and staff identified them as having characteristics that would fit into the intent of the study. TJKM then conducted field visits and detailed analysis of the 20 selected intersections. As part of their evaluations for the 20 intersections, TJKM considered many different factors, including, but not limited to, roadway classifications, speed limits, the type of control, meaning whether it's got stop signs, yield signs, or traffic signals, intersecting geometry, intersection geometry, and collision history. Intersection site distance was also evaluated at every location. Based on the evaluations, TJKM recommended a number of different types of improvements at the various locations. At 11 of the intersections, TJKM determined there was insufficient site distance. The recommended treatment for insufficient site distance is primarily to remove obstructions, including on-street parking, to improve the site distance. So, this is a figure that originated in the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials' Policy on Geometric Design of Highways and Streets. It shows what is known as a departure site triangle. Departure site distance is used when one of the two intersecting streets is controlled by a stop sign. In the figure, the street that is running up and down the slide is the minor street and it's controlled by stop signs at the intersection, and the major street runs left and right on the slide. It is uncontrolled. In this situation, the site distance must be such that a driver entering the intersection from the minor street can complete their maneuver without causing a conflict with a vehicle approaching on the major street. An example of what this means is, a driver making a left turn from the minor street must be able to complete their turn and accelerate up to the speed limit without causing a driver approaching on the minor street to even have to slow down. For a typical intersection of two local streets with 25 mile-per-hour speed limits, this means the driver on the minor street must be able to see an approaching vehicle at a distance of 240 feet away to the left and 280 feet away to the right. And those distances are labeled on the slide in red, near the top of the slide. Other common recommendations included adding or enhancing warning signs. Examples of some of the types of warning signs being recommended are on the top left of the slide. Adding centerline striping approaching intersections. This can improve safety at the intersections. It may also require removing parking. An example of this is shown on the upper right. Uh, there's a before and after. That before is what a lot of our intersections look like now, and the after is adding the Adding or upgrading, uh, our crosswalks to high-visibility crosswalks. And examples of the different types of high-visibility crosswalks are on the lower left. In San Bruno, we've commonly been using the Continental and Ladder style, which are the ones on the far left of those four and the far right of those four. And installing rectangular rapid-flashing beacons, also known as RRFBs, at pedestrian crossings. A picture of the warning sign with an RFB is shown on the bottom right of the slide. This is similar to what is currently on Cherry Avenue near YouTube and also what was recently installed, uh, near Parkside Intermediate School and Portola Elementary School. In addition, some locations were identified as possible candidates for always stops or traffic signals. And finally, TJKM identified, uh, some roadway segments that they would, believe would benefit from additional study as a whole rather than as individual intersections. And those roadway segments are San Bruno Avenue between San Mateo Avenue and Seventh Avenue, San Bruno Avenue between Hensley Avenue and Mills Avenue, Walnut Avenue between San Mateo Avenue and Seventh Avenue, and Clark Avenue between Oak Avenue and Elm Avenue. Oh, one more. And San Anselmo Avenue between San Felipe Avenue and Santa Helena Avenue. The Traffic Safety and Parking Committee discussed the results of the study on April 4th, 2018. The staff report was informational, so no action was taken by the TSBC at that time. Uh, the purpose of this staff report, uh, being brought tonight is also for informational purposes and intended to present an overview of the study to the City Council. No action by City Council is being requested at this time either. Staff will be further reviewing the evaluations and recommendations in the study for each of the intersections and develop plans for improvements. The highest priority intersections will be reviewed first and the improvement recommendations will be presented to the TSBC and the City Council for further consideration. Funding for the improvements will also be required, which is, at this time, unknown until we have a chance to figure out exactly what those recommendations will be. And staff will efficiently implement the improvements. However, with the limited resources, staff anticipates the implementation of these projects will occur over the next couple of years. This concludes our presentation and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at this time? Marty, please.
Thank you for, uh, this. We've been waiting a while. I was, um, hoping that our school locations and the intersections leading to our schools would be somehow involved with being a priority. Specifically, um, on Angus, Angus East, um, there, we have Bel Air School that, that it, um, I drive through there, especially this last weekend, and when cars park so close to the curb, you're, you're taking a, a chance when you, you can't see if the car is coming, 'cause I'm, we're stopped. We went to the baseball field, right, on the weekend at a baseball game, and as we were returning back, you have to just take a chance as you edge out and you edge out and edge out. There's a, a moment where you're hoping that the car is not coming and it could hit you. So, I, I would like to suggest that some additional, uh, somebody, just take a drive down there. I took a video of it one time over on, on Pine where you're, you're, you're taking your life into your hands just for that brief second, 'cause that car can be going 25 miles an hour and, and because that car is right there, you can't see it. So, um, I, I suggest that. And with the typical, um, intersections that we have in, in some of those streets, it seems like they could be implemented rather quickly. I know it's gonna lose parking, but I'd rather lose parking than lose somebody's health or, or life in, in a collision, you know? So, um, those are my comments of wanting to see something sooner than doing more studies of actually starting putting some paint down. That's, that's what my, uh, suggestions are.
Any other questions? Comments for staff? No, thank you.
I would, I would just add and maybe ask for the director's staff's, um, comments in response to Councilmember Medina's comments. Um, the, the high priority locations that were studied were selected based on a, um, a criteria based on, um, safety given accident history. So, we used a thoughtful criteria for, um, selection of the intersections that were studied. Clearly, there are, um, other intersections in the city where extreme caution is required. Um, the, in general terms, the evaluation is, uh, really needs to be done, uh, on, on an intersection-by-intersection basis in order to make sure that we have thoughtful and accurate results. And the improvements will generally be fairly costly to implement, particularly using, uh, if, depending on the number of intersections and the level of treatment that is required. So, we, we are seeking the City Council's specific concurrence if there is an interest. I believe that the staff outlined our proposed next steps, which at this point does not include studying further intersections until we've addressed these, these 20. So, if the council is seeking specific additional analysis, um, we would appreciate the council's concerns, concurrence and direction regarding that.
Thank you.
I was just gonna concur with staff's report in that I concur with the analysis that was done and the criteria in taking intersections with high accidents to be our number-one priority. And then we can continue down that road.
Irene?
I echo what Laura just said. And that's why we hired the experts. I appreciate the concern about Angus and Bel Air. I drive down there very often, but I, I, I also appreciate the criteria that the, the consultants had to use. So, I think we start with what we've got and keep on moving.
Any comments, Marty?
No, I, I agree with, with my colleagues here. It'd be great if we could do all of them, and I know that there probably are a lot more that we, that we'd like to get to, but, uh, maybe after we get these done and we can demonstrate some success and, you know, seeing the impact, then we can maybe roll it out to some additional ones.
Just wanna link one other topic.
Please.
What, what I'm asking for is some red paint. We need to put some red paint on some of these intersections. We don't need to study it anymore. I totally get it that these were based on accidents. Well, this prevents an accident. It's really easy to go out, put some red paint on some corners, just to give people a chance to see around a little bit so that they can feel safely to pass through an intersection. I totally get it. Doing, doing the big improvements are expensive. Putting red paint down isn't. So, that's, I just have to say that again because if any, if anybody in this room, and Irene, you have been through there, just a little bit of red paint so you could get that extra car length so you can see that there's nobody approaching. And that's all I'm asking for, is to, we're gonna do this, of course, but it's not costly to put down red paint. I don't, I don't get it, but, you know, there's, it takes three people to provide direction and you only have one that wants red hurt.
Through the chair?
Irene?
I, I think that, I think the, well, my hesitancy to say yes, go ahead and put red paint down is because there are many, many places in San Bruno that we all could drive around and say, "Well, I want red paint here, and I want red paint here, and I want red paint here," for, for very good reasons. I know I could, so we could go on all day, just as our consultant said, there are many other places that we need to do. So, we have to make priorities and we have to decide, you know, and go from there. It, it's easy to say, "Do red paint." I would concur that if we wanna have Traffic and Safety give more input about it, or if they want to, you know, if they have some priorities, or I don't know, Jimmy, have you talked to Traffic and Safety people to see what they, if they have more concerns that aren't being addressed, or?
We, the staff, we sent the same information to the TSBC committee.
Okay.
And, um, it was more for informational purposes, only just asked what we're doing here today. And the thought is for us to bring each individual intersections to them with the recommendations for their considerations in the future.
Okay. I, I guess the next question is, how soon are you going to be doing that? And then how soon can you implement the recommendations? And do you, does it need to come back to us, or you're just gonna go ahead and do it?
The recommendations will be brought to the City Council level as well for approval.
Okay. And, and what, what's your timeline for that?
We, we do have all the backlog of other TSBC islands, you know, in our, um, you know, in our work plan. And that's something that we need to figure out and prioritize and which ones to move forward with. In regards to the, to, to paint the, um, the red curves, you know, that's something that, you know, it is, I do agree that it can't be easily done, but the only thing is, you know, that will remove, um, potentially, uh, a lot of parking spaces within the, the neighborhood. And if, imagine if you paint every single intersection throughout the avenues and given the, the, you know, the figure that you saw earlier regarding the departure site distance, you know, the length of the red curbs that's needed could potentially be up to 200 feet per, at the intersection. So, that's something that needs to be considered and that's something that the staff is going to look into as well as part of the recommendations that will be brought to the TSBC committee.
Okay. And 200 feet is roughly 10, is that 10 parking spaces, roughly? Okay, that's like half a block on some of those places. All right. It, it gets frustrating, I know. And we all, we all think, "Let's go out and, and do this." We should, we all know. But the truth of the matter is, we don't. And that's why we hire people who do know. So, I appreciate your thoughtfulness about this. I, I ask for the audience's understanding. That's why we have a process. That's why we have Traffic and Safety people who delve into each one of these very thoroughly. And it works best this way if we do it, that, if we do it this way. I just have a really quick comment. I was at a conference and I was talking to a relatively new councilperson from another city, and she was quite excited about being a councilperson. And she said, and I, I called Public Works and I told them to go do something, and they went and did it. She said, "That was great." And I said, "Oh, my God." I said, "What if all five of your councilpeople did that?" And she stopped and, and was just horrified because, of course, all five of them don't agree about what should be done. So, she said, "I'm, I'm gonna stop doing that." So, that's just a little something that we have to all keep in mind. Thank you.
Does staff have, uh, direction or consensus from council? Move on to the next conduct of business, please.
Item nine B, approve, design, and adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with JMB Construction, Inc., for the Crestmore and Lomita Pump Stations Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $5,724,002. And approving a construction contingency of $860,000. Also, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for construction management and inspection services with Tanner Pacific in an amount not to exceed $497,596. Also approving a total project budget in the amount of $7,719, excuse me, 700, excuse me. And finally appropriating an additional $1,696,846 from the wastewater capital fund.
Thank you, Vicki. Jim?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. As part of the consent decree with San Francisco Baykeeper in, uh, 2011, the city is required to implement a number of projects to reduce sanitary sewer overflows in the sewer's collection system. The city has six sanitary sewer pump stations that are operated and maintained by the city and has scheduled the replacement of these pump stations in the CIP program to meet the consent decree requirements. The Olympic Pump Station has already, already been constructed. The Spyglass Pump Station is currently under construction. And this item in front of you tonight is the award of construction contract for two other pump stations, uh, the Crestmore and Lomita. The construction of both of these pump stations were scheduled to be completed by July of 2018. However, due to the complexity of the design at the both of these pump stations, and the design required careful review, which resulted in several design revisions and the delay in the start of this project. Since it is currently unachievable, achievable to complete the construction by July, staff provided an updated project schedule to Baykeeper in the 2017 Annual Sanitary Sewer Overflow Summary Report back in February. Baykeeper was pleased with the city's progress to meet the SSO reduction performance goals and the city's continued dedication to effectively, effectively reduce SSOs throughout the city sewer system. Baykeeper didn't have any additional comments on the overall schedule for these pump station projects. So, just a little background on these pump stations. The Crestmore Pump Station was constructed in about 1963 or 1964, so it's about like 54 years old. It's located near the intersection of Crestmore Drive and Oxford Lane. Just some pictures of the, the pump station site. The pump station building is located behind a back walk, as you see from the top of the picture. On the bottom shows the, the generator on the left side of the, uh, the roll-up door and the right side contains the, the pump. As for Lomita Pump Station, it was constructed in around, uh, 1960. It's located near, near the intersection of San Antonio Avenue and Santa Helena. The pump station and generator are all enclosed within a chain-link fence. Here's a picture of the, the pump station. And, uh, design of these, both of these pump stations were combined into a single project, which was intended to reduce the overall design cost. So, based on the costs from the previous contracts with other pump station design consultants, the city potentially saved about, you know, a quarter of a million dollars by performing the, uh, design of, of both of these pump stations together. So, these facilities will be upgraded with new pumps, electrical components, generator. The pump station will include new well, which is the holding basin for the sewer and, and the, the pumps. pumps, and that matches the design at other pump stations. And to eliminate large solids from entering the well, we also included a grinder to increase the longevity of the pumps. Along with the upgrade of the pump station, the force main, which is the pressurized pipeline that moves sewer by pumping, is also being replaced. So in addition to the sewer force main replacement at the pump station, the project will also replace the existing gravity sewer mains along the San Antonio Avenue between Santa Helena and Santa Inez, and the water main along San Antonio Avenue between Santa Helena and San Marco. So completion of this project will provide residents with a more reliable sewer and water system. Staff issued the notice of inviting bids for the project back in February, and we sent it also to 53 contractors listed in the city's contractors directory and also posted on the city's website. During a bid opening on March 29th, the city received three bids, with the price ranging from 5.7 to 6.7 million dollars. The lowest bid was from JMB Construction in the amount of, you know, $5,724,000, which was 12% lower than the engineer's estimate. The bids were competitive, the two low bidders were about $9,000 apart. Staff is recommending to award the contract to JMB Construction tonight, when the city has extensive experience working with the contractor, JMB, and are satisfied with their performance. And the firm completed the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction, you know, Phase 3 project, the College Pump Station, and the Genovin Sewer Replacement Project, and also they're currently working on the Sematyo Avenue Water and Sewer Replacement Project. So as part of the construction work, staff is also recommending to award a contract to construction management inspection firm to provide dedicated inspection oversight to deliver the project, and staff received three proposals. And based on the review of these proposals, staff is recommending to award the project to Tanner Pacific. Although the city is not required to consider cost as a criteria in the selection process, these costs where these services were reviewed, and these costs from these proposals range from approximately $500,000 to $775,000, with Tanner Pacific providing the lowest cost proposal. And Tanner Pacific has the experience and qualifications to, and performed construction management inspection for other agencies such as Silicon Valley Clean Water, Union Sanitary District, and City of San Carlos. The references were all positive and favorable. And as part of the project, there will be a community outreach, as there are construction impacts such as temporary roadway closures, noise dust, service interruptions, and access in and out of private properties. However, we'll try to minimize the neighborhood impacts as much as we can for this project. And staff anticipates the construction starting around August of 2018 here, and lasts about 12 months to complete. So as part of the fiscal impact, the fiscal years, 2017, 2022 CIP has a total budget of approximately $6 million for the pump station, gravity main, and the water main projects. With the construction contract, 15% construction contingency and CM inspection costs, staff has requested an additional appropriation of about $1.7 million from the wastewater capital fund. And this project is funded by the 2017 Wastewater Revenue Bond, and there is approximately $21 million in that fund, which is sufficient to fund the appropriation. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to staff and council?
I have to ask, $2, 5 million something and $2, really? Is that the latte, or is that? It just seems funny, that's all. Thank you for the report, it's very thorough.
Marty?
Yes, thank you. So these have to get done. You know, I've been talking about our water rates and sewer rates, and here we are with our sewer. Originally budgeted 6 million, and final project cost 7.7 million. Can you give some other information on what explains the difference? And then I have a couple other questions on that, just why 1.7 million more?
Yeah, so during the budget, we didn't account for the contingency, CM and inspection, as well as staff management and management's costs. So contingency alone is about close to a million dollars, and inspection management, you know, outside firm, it's about half a million dollars there, too. So with that, it's close to about, you know, one and a half, 1.6 million dollars.
And we're down, the city's down to one inspector now, right? One Public Works Inspector?
Yes.
Okay. So it's understandable that one inspector can't cover all the projects that are going on, so. I recall that at some point we were gonna pave Huntington, so if this, what's gonna happen, that's gonna be pushed back a year at least, as we're waiting for this project to get built, so we can put in the sewer main.
So as part of, you know, this project actually had the paving of Huntington included, and that was removed as part of this project, because the city received a grant to pave that portion of the roadway. And in order to use grant money, the city is deferring the paving of the roadway as part of this project, and then we'll be using the grant later on.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and put in our pipes, and then we're gonna pave afterwards?
Correct.
Okay. Because I believe some people from the public, I know one gentleman, was thinking that was gonna get done this year, so it's not, so, and that's okay, I understand, there are things that happen in construction, but that's fine, too. And it has to get done, we have to do this. Are these the last projects on the consent decree that need to get completed? Are we all good now? For everything we were supposed to do in the consent decree? These two things were supposed to happen now, and we got, I guess, a grace period to complete them. Is there anything else that is out there that we still need to take care of, that I still want a surprise about that we're out of compliance? So is there anything else out there? Are we, are we good?
Yeah, so we finished several projects already, and this, we have one project that we were bringing to the council, which is the Crystal Springs Sewer Replacement Project, that's another capacity-related project. The other one is the Crestwood Sewer Upgrade as well, that's another project that is part of the consent decree. So there are two projects that are still remaining in our books for us to complete.
And we have them coming this fiscal, coming year, or are we okay with our, Baykeepers have been good so far with our compliance?
I'm sorry, say that.
We're okay with our compliance, though. They have to get done by this year, or we're okay, they're, we're gonna get a, just kind of a waiver for the time? We're gonna get in legal trouble by not complying, or where do we stand with that?
Well, I'm not sure whether we'll be legal, that's something, I mean, we can talk to Mark about whether we'll be, we'll have any legal issues with Baykeeper, but we've been keeping them, you know, abreast of our schedule, and they realize, and as part of the document that was submitted to them, a revised schedule was provided to them. And so, you know, the city is not ignoring any of these projects, you know, we're in the process of constructing all of these, and all of the ones that I mentioned, the Crystal Springs Project is ready to go out to bid. We're just finalizing the, you know, just a few tweaks on the specifications that's being done right now, but, you know, I should be bringing to council within the next, you know, two to three months after the project is, goes out to bid. And, you know, the other project is currently under design as well for the Crestwood Sewer Main Project.
If I could just add to the director's comments, the concern is well-understood and well-taken. The city has been working closely to keep the baykeepers informed, and we've consistently and interestingly received routinely positive feedback from the baykeepers, both about our performance consistent with the compliance plans, as well as our coordination with them. So I think I can confidently say that we are not anticipating any adverse information or action by the baykeepers, or the regional board for that matter, with respect to our compliance with the agreements and the orders.
And the last follow-up, so, but a formal approval of a time extension isn't necessary? It seems like that would be like the most secure thing, where we actually got an extension of compliance.
We can take a look at that, it's not our understanding, but we will certainly look more carefully at that.
All right, thank you.
Other questions, staff?
No, through the chair, I just think that the recommendation of staff is needed. We can't wait any longer for this, it will cost money, I think. The comment was made, or the report included potential for more cost, but we know construction costs are increasing, so.
Does he have any? City attorney? This is to approve, design, and adopt resolution, can this all be done at once?
Yes, I believe there's just one resolution in the packet.
Is there any action from council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Item 9C, approve, design, and adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Redwick Construction for the San Bruno Avenue Street Medians Improvement Project in the amount of $1,278,045, and approving a construction contingency of Also authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for construction management and inspection services with Park Engineering, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $132,613. Also approving a total budget in the amount of $1,815,311. And finally approving $475,000 from the Measure A Fund, and $632,831 from the General Fund Capital Reserve.
Thank you, Vicki. Jimmy?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The project in front of you tonight is in regards to the award of construction contract for the San Bruno Avenue Medians Improvement Project. San Bruno Avenue serves as a major east-west arterial for residents, and is also highly used by work commuters to get to their destinations such as YouTube and Walmart.com. Several years ago, the city completed the medians improvement project along San Bruno Avenue segment between Scotland Boulevard and I-280, Interstate 280 on and off ramps, and the city has, it has been the city's intent to continue to work to improve the medians for the entire San Bruno Avenue. And this current project will improve the lower San Bruno Avenue medians from Interstate 280 to Elm Avenue. So this slide shows the project limits for the project, and the overall goal of the project is to enhance the appearance of San Bruno Avenue, and it's also to implement the pedestrian improvements to promote walkable connections for residents and commuters. The scope of work includes reconstructing the existing medians by replacing landscaping with more drought-resistant plants, installing drip irrigation systems, and installing new and replacement curb ramps to create accessible pedestrian routes. So here's some slide here that kind of shows the, some of the work proposed for the project. The work covers the median that's directly underneath the Interstate 280 by installing interlocking pavers. At the intersection there, at the interstate, you know, on and off ramps and San Bruno Avenue, there'll be audible pedestrian push buttons, LED countdown pet signal assembly, and new curb ramps. And along the landscaping, there are interlocking pavers and landscaping with new irrigation systems, that's shown in red. At the intersection of Cherry and San Bruno Avenue, there will also be, you know, audible push buttons, LED countdown timers, and then curb ramps. This shows the intersection from Cherry all the way to Elm along San Bruno Avenue. Again, landscaping in the medians with, some locations with interlocking pavers. There will be a radar feedback speed limit sign installed in approximate locations that are indicated in arrows. There'll be new curb ramps installed at Traeger Avenue, and at Elm, there'll be audible push buttons and LED countdown pet signal assembly and curb ramps. So the city received a construction grant for this project under the Transportation for Livable Communities grant provided by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, One Bay Area Grant Program, and the amount of the grant is $735,000 and requires a local match funding of 11.47%. And this design for the project was completed in February, and staff advertised the project for bid, and three bids were received on March 23rd, and the bid prices relatively close to one another. And the lowest bid was from Redwick Construction in the amount of $1278,000, which is approximately 35% higher than the engineer's estimate. Staff reviewed the bid materials from Redwick Construction and submitted the bid as complete and accurate, and the firm has completed numerous projects for involving like signal concrete paving, street improvement, and underground work for agencies such as Caltrans, Cities of Atherton, Oakland, San Jose, and Sematyo. Based on the experience and performance, staff determined that the firm meets the qualification to perform the work on this project. In addition to the construction contract, staff is recommending approval of contract with Park Engineering to provide construction management inspection. Due to the federal aid grant requirements, there is a need for a dedicated inspector and CM firm that has experience managing federal aid-funded construction projects to be on a team. Park Engineering was the only firm that submitted the proposal, with two other consultants declining. The firm is highly qualified and experienced in managing federal aid-funded projects, and has successfully provided construction management inspection services for cities such as Daly City, Menlo Park, Sematyo, Rinda, and Millbrae. Regards to the fiscal impact, there is a need for additional appropriation of approximately $1.1 million for this project. Since the grant only covers the construction portion of the project, the cost, which is, you know, is still inadequate, the construction costs for CM and staff time are needed to complete the project. So there is an available balance of $475,000 for Measure A Fund this fiscal year, which can be allocated to the project budget to supplement the construction cost. To make up the budget shortfall, the remaining amount of approximately $633,000 is being proposed to be allocated from the General Fund Capital Reserve and reimbursed back using the next fiscal year's measuring gas tax funds if the council chooses to award the project tonight. The General Fund Capital Reserve currently has approximately $1 million in available funding dedicated for the paving project, which can be used. So however, with this option, next fiscal year's measuring gas tax funds would reduce and limit the city's ability to perform the paving and sidewalk replacement projects. So the other alternative is to request staff to repackage the project into smaller segments and limit the work to certain areas to meet the construction budget. And it's based on the lowest bid received, staff estimates the cost to complete the work from Interstate, you know, 280 to Cherry to be about $600,000, and the remaining of the work to be about $700,000. And staff reached out to CCAG to determine whether repackaging the project would be a feasible option, and CCAG informed the city that the city can reduce the limits to which the city feels may be awardable, and keep the other areas as additive bid items, and can award them if the bid comes in low. CCAG also mentioned that by keeping the other areas in a bid as additive bid items, this will allow these projects to remain consistent with the environmental documents and the original project description. So repackage the bid would require staff to coordinate with the consultant, and may require redesign of certain sections of the medians for the irrigation system. However, it's currently unknown whether the new bid prices will be higher or lower until it's bid. If the city council selects this alternative, staff anticipates returning the city, returning to the city council in approximately June to award a construction contract. And this project needs to be awarded by June, as the city may risk the losing the grant if the project is extended further. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Michael?
Thank you. So, one comment is that I'm generally disappointed with our ability to maintain the landscaped medians. They get shabby pretty quick, and I know we've added positions in parks to help take care of them, but they're not easy to take care of. You have to stop traffic if you want to go out there and do things, so. I don't know that I'm in favor of adding more landscaping, if we can make it look nice without landscaping. I think, you know, not only is it cheaper to maintain, but, I don't know, I think that I like the idea of maybe doing something smaller and not having to dip into reserves. There's a lot of other projects, I know... There's a lot of other projects, I know, even like painting curbs, that, you know, there are other projects that might be more important to safety and to quality of life in the city. Filling more potholes, you know, resurfacing more streets. So if we're digging into reserves for a beautification project, I understand the importance of it, and I, you know, want the city to look nice and appealing, especially in one of the major corridors. But if we're depleting money that could possibly be going someplace, I understand there's a, you know, a grant portion of it, so it's not all of our money, and we do need to spend it. But the dipping into reserves part, I'm a little leery of.
Through the chair, I was going to echo your same comments. It's exactly the note that I had, is over time, I've seen a lot of medians in San Bruno get updated, and it doesn't take much time. The weeds come through, and it's something we don't have staff time to maintain. So putting any money towards something that says drought resistant, yeah, it's still going to cost water, you're still going to get the weeds, and so I have big concerns. And I also, I got the second comment, is that is, you know, what are the other options other than dipping into the reserves?
Marty?
That'll make three. We're not in the financial position to be concerned about, you know, the looks of things too much, you know? Our priorities are safety. So definitely where we can utilize that grant, and if it's primarily tied up with the pedestrian site with the signals, that would be great, because that would be one way of capturing that full part of the grant, if that's correct. Is the grant for the signals, or is it for the overall project? Is there a way that money is tied up?
It's for both. It's landscaping and pedestrian improvements.
So we can use it either or? If we decided to repackage it and do, make sure we did the signals, and then the landscaping is the least important, in my view, for the comment said here, and definitely not, I'm not, I don't want to dip into reserves. Our streets are way more in need than some fancy pavers down the middle of a median. So staff could repackage it, if it's possible to repackage the signalization, and leave the medians out of it, and however you're going to do the add-ons. But the main project would be the pedestrian improvements for the safety element of it, and then adding on whatever amount that you come up with is what I'm thinking, if that's doable?
That's something that we would need to discuss with CCAG. Because the grant covers, you know, both the pedestrian and the landscaping improvements. So if one just moves forward without the other, I don't know whether they'll approve that.
Okay, all right. I guess, those are my comments.
Harry?
Through the chair, is there a way to relook at the landscaping itself? I tend to agree with everyone. Our medians start to look shabby pretty quickly. Is there a way to pave over some of the dirt that we have there now, and just keep the trees? And that would lower the cost, or would it not? I mean, is there... I'd like to keep all the safety things, and see if there's some way to do a cheaper landscaping improvements, if we could possibly do that.
Yeah, we can definitely look at that.
Okay. Is that, I don't know if that's agreeable to everyone? If we could, if they can manage to do both by changing the landscaping? You know, maybe pay, maybe putting cement in there for a lot of it, a lot more than there is now, and keeping some of the trees? If that's a possibility?
We all like trees.
That looks like alternative two?
Well, this one has replacement of landscaping, so it would be not as much, I guess. Anyway, can we agree that if they can, if staff can figure out how to do both in a cheaper way?
And not dip into reserves?
And not dip into reserves. Or the minute, I mean, you know, if there's a little tiny bit?
A little bit.
If we can, yeah.
So I think council is starting to ask, on the grant, you don't have the answer, and we understand that, whether it precludes that if we just start going down one path. Other options than other going into reserves and the landscape, and I think you have a unanimous council as far as some of its ongoing maintenance concerns. I know, I've been up here, when I used to work for Parks and Rec, I'd always hoped, and I'm sure we have, as we actually go to those that are in the field, that are doing the work, that understand it the best, to find ways of more efficiency and making things easier as far as trying to maintain that and safer. So hopefully, that's always been asked. But to staff, is there options for that?
So what I'm hearing from the council, and I believe this is direction that we can proceed with, as follows. Repackage for rebidding the project. After consultation with CCAG, in order to maximize utilization of the grant funds, redo to minimize maintenance requirements for any landscaping, and overall prioritize the safety, pedestrian safety improvements over landscape to the maximum extent possible. Now, that may mean that we may be able to repackage the entire project to accomplish that. It may mean cutting the project into a smaller area. But if I understand the council's interests correctly, and I forgot to say, minimize, eliminate use of reserves. So with that direction, I think we understand our task is to re, is to look at all possible options to accomplish those objectives by repackageing and rebidding the project. Is that correct?
I would agree.
Michael, Marty?
Yes.
So with that, we have a resolution for the design resolution, which would be modified. So can that proceed with that being modified from what the resolution we have in the packet?
Okay, it may need the city council to, I'm sorry, the city attorney to elaborate, but in essence, your direction needs to, your action needs to include rejection of all the bids and direction to rebid. So we can accept that action, or that direction by city council, and that action by minute order.
Yes, you can simply make a motion to reject all bids and direct staff to pursue alternative number two with the direction that you've already given.
What he said. I moved to reject all the bids and direct staff to do alternative two with the directions that we gave. That's a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Staff has a direction? All right. Let's move on to item number 10. Comments from council members. Receive a report from Irene O'Connell on members' attendance at the recent progress seminar held in Monterey, April 13 through the 15.
Thank you. It's quite a thing. We, I believe they had over 500 people attending from San Mateo County, many of them elected officials, including council members, mayors, Board of Supervisor people. We had Congressman, my mind just went blank, Kevin Mullen, thank you, and other people there. So what it, it's a program where they have what are called breakout sessions. There were five of them. They included San Mateo County Housing Revolution, redefining expectations. Another was future of mobility. Another was innovation and disruption, its impact on workforce development. Another was transit, and how automation is going to affect traffic jams. And another was the psychology of change. So the four council members were there, and we participated, and listened to the lectures, and learned a great deal. There was also opportunities to interact with other council people from San Mateo County that we normally don't get to see. And we talked about our problems, and they talked about theirs, and we came to some solutions. And it was a, I think it was a worthwhile program. And I don't know if anyone else would like to add?
Anything else to add by other members? Thank you, Harry. Other comments from council members?
Michael, anything? Marty?
Well, it's that last Saturday of the month. What does that mean? If you have an appetite, come down to American Legion. We're going to hook you up. It's $10 all you can eat. The bar's not open, but if you ask maybe nicely. But anyhow, in all seriousness, it's a great event. At the American Legion, 757 San Mateo Avenue, 8:30 to 11:00. We have made-to-order omelets, pancakes, hash browns, bacon, sausage, mm, good. Anyhow, hope to see you there. $10 for adults, is it five for, six for kids? But, and they have raffle, which is fun. So hope to see you all there. Thanks.
Thank you. We, council does have a closed session on two items. Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 for city clerk, also the same, under the same government section code of 54957 for city manager. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be held right here, May 8, 7 o'clock. Everybody enjoy the rest of your week.